The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
We've got one more person that would like to make a public appearance. I did not see her request when I slammed the gavel down.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Ventrees Reeves and I am a resident of Greta Lane. And I see that you have something on the agenda concerning Greta Lane. And I just wanted to get a better understanding because all that the residents on Greta Lane have heard is what we've seen on the news. Nobody from the city, nobody from the airport, FAA, you know, has said anything concerning that. And they were speaking about literally picking my house up and moving it. And nobody said a word to any of us. And I just am trying to get a feel for what is going on.
I understand. And I don't think anybody's gonna be out there tomorrow or the next day, the next week to pick your house up. I understand that. And there is a problem. We've had our attorney to research that. We will be going into executive session to determine the airport and its needs and other issues that are associated with that. We will come out of executive session after that. And I think that there will be some direction in regard of what will happen on Greta Lane.
And like I said, you know, of course, again, going by the news reports, this is something that has been in the process for two years. They may or may not be, you know, I understand it may or may not be so. But if it's something that has been going on that long and nothing has been said, I just, that, that concerns me. It really does. And I just wanted to make my statement anyway.
I understand. And we appreciate you being concerned. Some of the rest of us are concerned about that as well. And that we should have some additional information forthcoming towards the end of the, of the meeting tonight. If you would like to wait around to hear some of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have some other, other folks that would like to speak at this point? All right, we will move along with our agenda. We're down to board business, I believe. Let me double check that. Yeah, seems like it. And we have a request to approve to accept a bid for the north runway improvement project. And who's gonna speak behalf of the airport? You gonna do that?
Yeah.
This is a request to approve, request approved to accept a bid for the north runway improvement project.
Now, correct that, ma'am.
Yes.
That is the taxiway and extension of the ramp.
Taxi?
Taxiway and extension of the ramp. I'm Ernest Russell. I'm vice chairman of the airport board. The chairman, Tom Stennis, is in, is in Moss Point having his children who are having problems down there. So, so this came as a rush. Now, we have recently, we have, we have been, we have been fighting for years to get monies to change the position of a taxiway that's on the north side of the field. It is, as it is situated right now, the taxiway is too close, is too near the runway, the takeoff runway or the runway. So, it's got to be moved according to the FAA. And they have, we have applied for and they have, they have awarded us funds in the, in the amount of 1.8, 1.818 million dollars to do that and to extend the ramp on the other side. Now, this is contingent upon your signing the agreement. And it needs to be signed fairly soon. Now, the, so that, what this will do is this will give us, this will give us some monies to change to actually to move, to move the taxiway where it's supposed to be. Now, that's for instrument purposes. The, it is, in terms of instrument purposes, the other taxiway was too close, too near the runway. And so, this is a necessary.
This is a, just a movement of the runway.
It's just moving, it's just moving. And they will tear up the old taxiway and move this new taxiway further away from the runway.
Do all of you understand what we're requesting approval for bidding for this? And do you have the bids came in?
The bids, the bids in, yes.
And how much were they?
The low bid was 1.968 million from Ellis Construction Company.
All right, thank you. And it, so, so it, so we will, we, so we need to, they've, they've given us this much money, but they need, they, they've sent the approval and you had it.
Okay.
Ms. May, may I ask Dr. Russell a question? You said that we had a grant of approximately 1.81 billion.
1.818.
And I'm assuming to go with that is some local share? Or is that 100% grant?
That is.
In other words, where do we make up the difference between that and the 1.9?
That bothers me too.
Oh.
The, we have another problem too. The, the, but this, the, the problem, we have a problem in that they think that we have $240,000, as I see it. And I have to check with, with our manager here. And our, and our restricted fund at the airport. Well, that $240,000 was contingent upon, I understand, is this correct, ma'am?
Settle the land.
That it's contingent upon the, the, the city giving us the money for the seven acres that they took.
Who gave it back to you?
Right, so then there is no, right, there is no funds in there.
Yeah, right, so there's been no money transfer there.
Okay.
So, we have, so, so Mr. Stennis and I will, and, and, and our airport manager will go to see the FAA and clear this up with them. But they need to have this, we, we need to, we can, we'll have to see about this when y'all approve it in terms of these.
You may be looking at about $85,000 you might come up with in your budget made of somewhere.
And it looked like the difference is about $150,000.
Is there any way to talk them into the bid? I mean, of 108,000, 100?
I think they gave us about, I think, I think they gave us about all they could give us.
I see.
You've got some alternates there. And I said, I'm not familiar with what the alternates are. I mean, there may be something in there that can be left out without totally listening to it.
You probably familiar with what the alternates are?
Yes. We, we have, we have, we will, we will, Rodney, right, come up here. He's, he's the one who's been doing it.
The base bid is for the new north taxiway. The alternate one is more ramp area for parking the airplanes. There was not enough money for alternate two and not enough money for alternate three. We started this with a 1.1 million. After the contractors all bid, they turned, it turned out that the 1.8 is what was available from the FAA in Jackson. And the way I understand it is the total project, 95% is paid by the FAA, 2.5% is paid by the state, and 5% is paid by the city. No, 2.5 the city, 2.5 the state, 95 federal.
So, it could be that we're needing more than 150,000 because we have to come up with 2.5% of this 1.8 million? So, we're up to $200,000. If we, it sounds like, if I understand correctly, if we accept this bid to do this work, then it would obligate the city to help subsidize this or contribute to this? Or is there airport operations that?
You have the county, the university, as well as the city, that one would think that all would participate in that.
It's a 45, 45, 10 with the university, the county, and the, and the city.
So, if we had $250,000 we need to come up with, our portion would be 45% of that. Is that correct?
I got a question. Would the county and university be obligated to pay the remaining percentage of that? Or is that just something we hope they would do?
Well, there is an agreement that a portion's cost in that fashion. Now, whether or not they are obligated for this specific project, I don't know without reviewing some stuff.
Right, Tom.
Well, we've got a few answers here. And before we go out and obligate, let's say, additional funds that we don't necessarily have at this time, that we need to, say, take, take a look at.
One of the problems is the short-term nature of the grant.
What's the timeframe?
If we're going to accept the, if we, if we accept the 1.8 million dollars, the timeframe is there, they would like it in, they would like to have an answer back tomorrow, the 7th.
It can give us a lot of time.
What was the alternate, Rodney?
The north ramp is like a parking area for the aircraft.
Okay, does that have to be done? Is the 1.81 million contingent on that being part of the project?
Well, that, that can be reduced in size.
We can, we can, we can change, we can, we don't, we, the, the main thing that we want to get is the, is the taxiway. If there's money left over, we will go and get the ramp. If the, and, and, or some part of the ramp.
Okay, so what is the cost for the taxiway?
1.3.
1.3 million, that's the, that's the, that's the base bid.
And we have the 1.8 million? Is, is that 1.8 million from FAA include the?
That would include the, that would, as I see this, the way you've got this land, it, that includes not only, that includes the, the taxiway, that includes the ramp, and that includes also some drainage work. But we're not gonna get the drainage work. And so...
And also those change the 95, five.
How's that?
Does this alter the 95, five position of the FAA?
Yes.
So, we're still dealing, of course, with a 95, five of the 1.3.
There's still an obligation, but from the city to the airport.
Well, or to the, except the grant.
Yes, but it can be, yes.
2.5.
What you want to do, yeah. And I'm sorry, well, 2.5 assuming that's done.
The state pays there 2.5?
All right, so, we got an action fund for 2.5%. So, we, we get, we get 2.5%. We would have to, the airport would have to pay 2.5%. And the airport, it would probably, it would come out of our budget probably.
How long's this project gonna take?
It will, it will probably take, it probably won't be done until next spring. But it will be, they will start right away.
What if the board chose to approve the local share of the 1.3? Would that be sufficient to get the project going?
That would mean that we, there would be no ramp then.
Exactly. That's the alternate, is it not?
That would be the, that would be the, the, the first alternate.
That's just the base, the 1.3.
That's the base. And then the alternate is the, is the ramp. And that would be 1.7, that would be 1.7, 7 something.
But it is the taxiway that is the critical thing here, is it not?
Correct. We have, this is one of the first times that we have gotten a loan like this from the, from the federal government and the state. And it is the largest to date. And the reason we had it is because we, we, we did an airport layout plan. And they, and so, so we, we qualified for it in this one.
You know, of course, as I like to support sweep accounts, I don't like turning down a 1.8 million dollar grant for improvements that are needed at our municipal airport. The problem is the local share.
We can do one of two things. We'll take the 10% that we're gonna be getting off, the 2% that we'll no longer get the 20% from. And over a period of time to the spring would create, I think, that 10% is gonna create how much a matter of month? About $7,000 a month?
It's already applied towards.
Your general budget.
Right, and economic development within the general fund.
It could be that it falls within two budget years.
Well, that's where I'm coming from. If we could grow into some of this stuff right here. And I'm not still clear how much money we need to come up with at this particular point. What's that 45% 250,000 dollars?
If, well, now we're, so, it depends on, we gotta start again and talk about whatever number we're working with. If we're talking about.
About $40,000.
If we're talking about the, our 2.5% share of a 1.8 million dollar project, it's $45,000.
About.
And we have until the spring to do this?
We've got to, we've got to accept, we have to accept the, we have to accept the grant now.
But you said the work would be done in the spring.
The work would probably not be done until, 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 at least, at least until, you can never tell. But, but it, but it probably won't be, if it's been like in the past, it's taken a good long time to do it. So, it probably, probably would be next, next winter, next spring.
Man, that sweep account looks better all the time, doesn't it?
That it does, if we could just get it set up according to law.
Mr. Hallman Cox, was your 2.5% of the, of the 45, was that 45,000 from 45% of the 2.5%?
No, it was, it was a straight, as I, as I thought I understood, it was, the FAA was 95%, the state is 2.5, and then the city period is 2.5, so.
Well, it's, the airport is 2.5.
It's the airport, 45%. So, it's actually.
Well, it would be the city, since you're doing, the, the grant is coming to the city. But it's, is the, it's the, the 5%, half, half of the 5% is the state. They pay, they pick up half of it. And the MDOT picks up half of it.
Are there any electrical lights that gotta be added to this thing? Are they?
Yes, so, well, that includes.
Really? And how much is that?
That's.
That's in it, that's included. That's, that is, as is.
I see Ed taking a big sigh of relief back there.
So, if I understand correctly, then this 2.5% is the airport share. And our current arrangement with, as part of the airport, the city provides 45% and the county provides 45% and the MSU provides 10. So, then our 45% of that 2.5% of the 1.8 million dollar grant.
We roll it.
Would be $20,450 would be the city's responsibility if we accept this grant at 1.8.
I think we could swing that.
Except if there's another 200 for real property.
Yeah, we could.
It's gotta come up at some point, which we have 45% of that. So, we have another 80,000, so you had $100,000 to take. $200,000 for this 2 million dollar cost right there.
Okay, all right. Now, but to be clear, what we're gonna approve, once we talk about it, we're not talking about accepting a 1.968.
No, no.
No, we're talking about accepting a 1.8.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, well, then, I don't even know that.
Well, that's all they're gonna give us.
Right. But, but if I understood correctly, you were asking us to approve a bid from Ellis Construction at 1.968 million dollars? Okay, so all.
We're asking you to accept the.
The grant.
Both of the items were on the agenda, gentlemen.
For 1.8 million.
So, we're, you're asking us to accept the grant of 1.8 million.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we got the figures worked out, $20,000? Or do I have a motion that we accept the grant of 1.8 million?
So moved.
Do we have a second to that?
Okay.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of approving the grant of 1.8 million, please raise your hands. Thank you.
Let me thank you, but let me apologize for not being better grounded in this because it came to me tonight about 7 o'clock.
Dr. Russell, we understand now, where do we stand with the bid of Ellis Construction Company? Because that's what's on the agenda that I assume Tom Stennis put on the agenda or somebody did.
You accepted that bid. That bid was accepted and sent down back in August.
No, we have not, we have not accepted anybody's bid in regard to that.
Just the airport board has.
The airport board has. And they've not brought us, brought it to us.
That's what's in front of you, ma'am.
What was in front of us that we just thought we voted on?
I'm sorry. Both items were on, both items were on the agenda for this evening. And one of, one of them was the, was the grant. And the other one was to accept the bid from Ellis Construction. The grant was a short, short notice item because it came in and needed to be voted on tonight, or it could be submitted tomorrow.
I see. Apparently, we have a bid of 1.9 million. And how much dollars?
The bid is good for how long? The bid is good for how long?
I don't want to answer that question. I've got the documentation in the office about Yate there, which is why it was applied to all.
Of course, the bid specs would have said.
It's 300, it's about 300 pages.
I understand, but the bid specs would have said that the bid would be good for X number of days, 30, 62 months, something.
So, where y'all will come up with the other $150,000?
Well, we may not be able to accept that.
We have to rebid that. But we have the prerogative to go out and rebid that, is that correct?
Or negotiate with the low bidder, given the significant differences and make some changes.
We will adjust, we will adjust the ramp to fit.
Make the money. Come in with the money. All right.
That's what, that's what, that's correct.
Except a bid of 1.3.
Except the low bidder, Ellis Construction Airport, to reduce.
To do more than.
Yeah, we're gonna bid here, but they have a date on it. I'll let you look at it through this.
60 days after the opening. When were they open?
August 9.
August 9. So, we got time. The bid is still good.
Still.
Though, I think we could go on and accept the low bid of Ellis Construction Company instructing the airport board to negotiate with the construction company, reducing the bid in whatever form, shape, fashion, so that it will fit the grant amount of 1.81 million dollars.
That was the intent.
Okay, that was the intent. Did we have a, did you make that informed?
Well, then I will move that we accept the low bid of Ellis Construction Company with the stipulation that that low bid of 1.968, 148.15 be reduced by the appropriate action of the airport commission to bring the bid in line with the available grant funds of 1.81 million dollars.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. It passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That brings us down to departmental business. First of all, chief administrative officer. You have several items here.
When are you going to take up the City Island hiring?
Right after you get through with yours. And I've got them in car in order.
I'll be as early as possible. I have requested authority to proceed the citizen survey. I discussed it with the various boards over the few weeks, the citizen survey, using the graduate student shelter pledge, this department have indicated they want a project for their graduate students. And the citizen survey would allow us to get a baseline of where we excel and where we may be lacking in some of our city services. Get a sort of customer response. They have opportunity to develop some questions that will give us some information about sanitation, about parks and rec, about all the things that the city does, the services we provide. And I thought that this might be a good opportunity to show the citizens that we're interested in what they think and give us an opportunity to sound to the issues that they may raise and also allow us to know exactly what we're doing well and what we can improve on. So, it's something I thought might be a good project for them and good project for, give us good information in a way. It shouldn't cost us any funds, except perhaps copying costs. They have a phone bank that they'll use. They're gonna develop the survey. And there were some students who were here earlier, but I think they gave up on us and laughed. So, I just wanted the board to consider this and perhaps approve it if at all possible. And the reason I, the agenda was long, but I brought it anyway, is just because in order to get it rolling, they needed a little time to develop questions, et cetera, et cetera, and go through the hoops that the university required to do it.
I would move, then, that the city authorize using the graduate students from the Public Policy Division of the Political Science Department to do a citizen's survey of attitudes and all sorts of things with the stipulation that the questionnaire be given to the board for review prior to it being implemented.
We have a motion with a second.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you.
The second issue was to request approval to seek historical status for City Hall. And Michelle is here, Michelle Jones is here. She's the historical expert. My thought being that it might be a good, give us an opportunity to get some funds to run about City Hall. And she can speak to that.
I'm actually an employee of the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, Historic Preservation Division. I run a Northfield office, so I get to be here in Starkville. But we administer the antiquity. But we administer the antiquities law, which was passed in nineteen seventy and amended in nineteen eighty-three, which administers the Mississippi Landmark Program, which specifically deals with publicly owned properties that are deemed to be historic. And Ms. Pearl asked that I be here to answer any questions you might have about landmark status for city hall.
Ms. Jones, just a couple of questions. If we pursue historical status, can you tell what restrictions we'll have on this building?
This building was built as a city hall and as a National Guard armory. The guard unit that was here was called up before the building was actually finished. So it really talks about the history of World War II in our county and how that relates into a larger statewide context. That being said, what is historically important about this building is actually the outside shell. Obviously, this whole part of the building was once open auditorium space and doesn't have any historic integrity. Mississippi landmark status does not mean that you have to get permission for routine maintenance. If the building department wants to paint its walls, you know, that doesn't require any special permission. It's only for major restoration projects.
Says any proposed work that could affect the historical or architectural character of something designated a landmark is subject to review by the permit committee of archives history.
There are, the legislature's been very kind to the Department of Archives and History in the past five years, and there are numerous grants available to municipalities now for historic landmarks. And Mississippi landmark status is just one guarantee that a municipality or county is going to be a good steward of that historic property once it's restored. So it's just a way of making sure that the public good is served, once public funds are expended.
Would if we had a later date decide that the best use for this building would be to move it or demolish it for other purposes? If we had landmark status, would we be able to do that?
You would have to apply to the permit committee for that.
And so it would no longer be our decision to make. In other words, if we did this, we would be turning over that authority to another agency?
Precisely, yes. But in a broader scope, this is a publicly owned building. So if a public contingency within the community decided that they were not, that they were opposed to the demolition of the building, the department could impose landmark status on the building. It's, it is public policy. I mean, that's what the legislature decided, that it was good public policy and that these historic buildings had a place in our collective community. And so while the city and counties can apply for this status, it also can be imposed in cases of demolition.
I guess.
Obviously, the department would rather be good partners with municipalities and counties.
I guess, and I appreciate the architecture of the building. If I understand correctly, it's Art Modern, which is some school of Art Deco. And I certainly appreciate that. I just am concerned at this point if we put any restrictions on ourselves as we still haven't made a final decision on the justice complex or even the city comprehensive plan and long-term plans for a city hall. I'd hate for us to put any restrictions on ourselves prior to that, even though I personally see significant value in this building. And I know while it's been discussed that maybe it'd be best used as a parking lot, I don't think that's appropriate, given its historical status. Yet at the same time, I don't think I'd be, I'd be doing the right thing if I put any additional restrictions on us while we haven't made some decisions about what to use it for.
Mr. Mayor? Do you have any comments on this? Other comments?
I did have somewhat of a follow-up question.
He wants to hear the mayor's.
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Well, I do. That if you look through this building, it has great interior space. There's only one other city hall of the state of Mississippi, I understand, that is kind of an Art Deco, and I believe that is in Bates St. Louis. Is that not correct?
It's.
Was, was in Bates St. Louis. I can't believe that a hurricane blew away twelve inch for a four concrete building.
And I guess that is the thing, is when we look at what's just happened, you know, the buildings, the vast devastation is awful, but then we all have those shared memories of those historic places. And I think that is what is important, you know, within our collective memories. That's one reason it's in the public good to preserve these buildings.
This particular building could look very good if it were redone according to historical guidelines. It has great space inside of this facility. If you've not looked at it, we've got an auditorium on this back side. We've got a great space back here in this back. It's got twenty-four foot ceilings and issues. It could be gutted. It was not a particularly outstanding job of Mr. McLaren when it was done, but I guess it was done with budget at times, is that correct?
That is correct. And the then-city mayor personally got his hammer.
That's, that's dangerous. That's just dangerous. But we have a, we have a great facility potential here. Once you get the police department out and you could rearrange this thing, it could look great. Some good examples of how good it can look. I'd invite all of you to the building department in the next thirty days in which the orange carpet will be taken up up there, and it will be exposing the hardwood floors. And the ambiance that we will have up there will really be totally different from what we're used to. This is a great building to say certainly reuse. Saves money to reuse your historical buildings, let me assure you.
Will they restrict any size and use of this building?
Use is not something that the Department of Archives and History.
What about size? This building is much larger than the Nodden of God Army was. And what I'm saying is, if we get to use this building, can it be larger than the original Nodden of God Army?
The department advocates adaptive reuse, which means that possibly things aren't used as they originally were, but they fulfill a present and current need of a community. So that would be a permit issue, but, and I'm not on that permit committee, but I would say it would be taken under consideration if you wanted to change the main entrance to the building so that you met ADA requirements more. I mean, changes could be made, it doesn't have to be original function and use. The front doors don't always have to be the front doors. Does that answer your question?
Okay, but you don't have to have the appearance of a corncut hut.
I, I'm, I'm not on the permit committee, so I could not answer that question.
Well, that's just the thing that I remember about this, and very few people remember what this was forty years ago, telling my age. But, you know, we need to know these things before we proceed what is expected to use of this building. If it goes back to the original size of this corncut hut or the Nodden of God Army, it might not be feasible at all for a city hall.
Well, and the law does not require that you regress a building to a certain point. So there, there is no law that says, once a landmark is declared, that you have to regress. And I don't know.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I had a question.
Yes.
If it's designated as a Mississippi landmark, it enables us to apply for certain grant monies. If we don't actually draw down that grant money, do we fall under the purview of this permit committee? So once we do?
I mean, and, you know, obviously, the question is, you're, you're not gonna apply for the next cycle, which that deadline was actually extended October seventh, given the storm. But this is information to have and to keep. I think it's, I mean, I'm very fond of this building, but it's not something that has to be done today. It's not gonna make you ineligible for grants. Archives is not gonna come up here and say, we would have given you a million dollars if only you'd been a Mississippi landmark. But if at the point that the board has developed a plan, any use for this building, this would be the first step in allowing the city to apply for those grant funds.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Do we have any motions?
I would move to take them out of under advisement for continued review and please keep us posted with information when things occur until such time as we get a better feel for existing projects and needs of the city. And I so move.
Say.
We have a second?
Certainly nice to have your expertise here in Starkville. And I hope our questions don't reflect anything other than us being very careful while we're in all this extensive comprehensive planning process. And it sounds like a great opportunity, once we make those decisions, to pursue some, some grant money and protect this building for, for our kids.
Did we have a second to that motion? You second that?
I did.
The D.C.'s motion?
I did.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Brings us up discussion, approval of the AWS contract.
A W S contract, yes. I took liberties with Rodney's previous language in other contracts and amended the contract to reflect sixty, thirty day notices opposed to sixty day notice for renewal. As it stands now, it says that we renew in a year, if you didn't, for a year, if you didn't notice them sixty days prior. Also, we added contractual language that makes the contract determinable by either party to the ninety day notice of cancellation. And then the miscellaneous section stated the contract subject to the laws of Mississippi rather than the state of Tennessee. And again, a whole harmless clause that includes the city as well as the contractor. And I received Rodney's approval, his verbal approval on those particular items. But the A W S contract is, is your work. It's the weather, the weather observation station. And it's the maintenance agreement for that, for that contract.
End of discussion.
Will this be any additional, I guess, how does this impact the budget, if at all, entering into this contract?
It's just part of the airport, the airport budget, it's in the airport budget.
End of discussion. Do we have a motion?
I would move approval of the A W S contract as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That brings us down to discussing adoption of fuel conservation for the city.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this matter came up, all the clocks were brought to our attention when all the fuel lines were gathering at pumps. And then as we began to, Doug began to get into how much fuel we actually have at the fuel farm, we determined that there may be some possibility that we might run short ourselves. And that being said, our fuel conservation policy seemed inappropriate to measure to take in two ways. One, just a natural fuel, a natural conservation policy for the city. And then again, a conservation policy that dictates some more drastic or just strict measures of operation for a short period of time to make sure that we don't run out. Specifically, Doug's inventory for the day is, we have nine hundred and seven gallons unleaded. Weekly consumption is two thousand one fifty-seven, and divided up, we got about six point one days supply at this point in time. Diesel inventory for today is five thousand two hundred and ninety-eight gallons. Weekly consumption is twelve hundred and thirty-eight gallons, and week's supply is approximately four point three week's supply. And availability is on a day-to-day basis, and apparently no advance order being accepted at this time. So our next call is gonna be on Thursday for a Friday delivery. As I understand it right now, no guarantee of what we're gonna get, which is why the, kind of how we wanna take the approach, whether we go into a strict mode and as because we're operating right now under the emergency status that was authorized by the board and continued again this evening, the police, you have letters in front of you, and all the department heads have, how they've responded with each department as to what they're willing to do to conserve fuel for this brief, hopefully a brief period of time for next week. I asked them to do something for you in a month or three months kind of plan, and that's how they responded. Obviously, there are things that we'd rather be doing, particularly Chief Ray wants his guys to go out and work out. There's some things that are obviously morale boosters that are, but are not necessarily, that would allow us to conserve fuel. And that would be one of the things I wanted the board to consider. The more controversial is gonna be Ms. Boyd's sanitation department. And I know that the discussion of one day a week versus three days a week is always difficult. I asked her to prepare for the concept of one day a week, and she worked diligently and did so. And I did that knowing more probably would not be real happy, or no one in town would be real happy with the end result of that. But I felt as though in using prudence and in our best interest, at least to consider it, whether we adopted it or not. So she came up with a schedule that we'd work on one day a week. And I don't know at this point in time whether or not, you know, the board really wants to go that strict, but it will be a certainly stricter measure. And I'm not gonna make any necessarily, any recommendations, because we don't have figures of exactly how much that would save, but I think it's obviously you'd save a certain amount. But until we get into fighting for prices mode, maybe we don't wanna go there. But I wanted the board to at least consider what the possibilities were and see how, how strict a mode we wanted to stay in for what period of time based on the information that you have.
Any suggestions for the board members, any comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Pearl, we always appreciate your leadership on these governmental matters. And particularly, we appreciate your interest in wanting to ensure that we conserve fuel as we operate in this very tight economic crisis. However, at the same time, I am not in favor of reducing city services, particularly, I am strongly opposed to reducing residential garbage collection from two days a week to one day a week. We've discussed that over the past several years, about going to one day per week. So I am in favor of keeping two day a week for residential garbage collection. Additionally, I am in favor of keeping the five days of mowing the right of ways as opposed to going to three. The staff can't even cut the grass in five days. Well, let's go into three days. So we need to keep that at that level. So, you know, if there's any other basic service, I'm not in favor of reducing it. But those are the two of the main things that really stand out to me. So I wanna go on record to let the mayor and the board know in a very respectful way that I'm not in favor of reducing those two particular concerns.
Any other board members with comments pertaining to this?
Yes, I would like to bring to the attention of the board. I think the board members have received a letter that it wasn't signed, but it was sent to the board, previous board, and it's been sent again. A lot of people and citizens are concerned about our city policemen driving from seven to twenty miles a day home in their police cars, living outside the city limit. And have we ceased to do this now, or we still allowing this to be happening?
I know, sir, we have not ceased that, that particular operation. I think you have in front of you Assistant Chief Outlaw's response to the department head that asked him to go into a stricter mode of fuel conservation. He outlined what the department was going to do, and Chief forces here to affirm that or if he wants to change, amending that.
So you are so stating that we are continuing to do this?
Yes, sir, we have, that is not what was, what was changed. The gasoline conservation of the police department was lifted to reduce the mileage by twenty-five percent where possible, turn off the vehicles while out of the car unless the blue lights are needed, and then walk and talk more than riding, utilize bike control, non-stationary radar instead of lonely radar, maintain a sign sector, and UICOP offices that are in the area of the background. That did not include, not, that did not include the vehicles.
Well, I'd like to inject at this time that we, may it not be a proper time, but we have noticed that we had a great increase in fuel usage of the police cars. And I understand this is a policy that's been started back, that was stopped in the last administration. I don't know, I think I asked Chief Lindsey during the interview, why are we doing it to start with? And he so stated that it was in the event that we have a callback. And in my opinion, and I'd like to know the rest of the board's opinion. And in my opinion, and I'd like to know the rest of the board's opinion, any employee that is called back on duty for any reason, any city employee that are living outside the city limits of Starkville should produce their own transportation back and forth to work. I'd just like to hear if anybody else got a call now, because it can get quite expensive.
I think Mr. Davis.
Go ahead, Mr. Davis. First of all, I'd like to concur with Aldman Perkins' comments about the sanitation department and two day a week pickup. If I heard you correctly, we've got, if we were not to get any diesel, we've got four weeks of diesel?
Three weeks.
Three weeks of diesel?
Yes, we do.
And that's to go, what we expect to get a shipment. And primarily...
We are, no promises have been made.
Right. But primarily, our sanitation department runs on diesel. I'm looking on this, so we should be pretty good on that. So I would like to concur with Aldman Perkins as far as continuing our regular schedule of pickup. As far as the take-home fleet, it also has a fiscal impact on the department's budget and planning for equipment and replacement of cars, if I remember correctly. One of the, one of the things about the take-home fleet is that it actually extends the life of a police cruiser. And off the top of my head, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but is it not from a three-year lifespan to about a nine-year lifespan on those vehicles?
Correct.
So it's not just as simple as looking at the fuel usage, because you are getting six more years out of a police cruiser's life and functional use within the city's fleet. It's, you know, it is a balancing act, of course, but I think that the positives far outweigh the negatives of that situation.
Just to follow up on that, the life of the car, and I don't want to get too far off the subject, can you explain why that would be? I mean, it seems the most intuitive answer is that you're driving the car less. If it's actually part of a fleet, then it's going to be used in both the AM and the PM shift. If you're doing a take-home car, of course, you're adding cars, driving them out into the county. But it's only being used for one shift. So I'm wondering if that isn't part of the reason why the police, that the life of the cars are longer? It seems like you might be using the same amount of mileage.
Actually, yes, sir. As I provided to all the board members, we have a very specific assigned vehicle policy take-home program. Some of the advantages to it that we have listed are to promote the security of the citizens of the city of Starkville through greater visibility and presence of police vehicles on the street and highways. To deter crime by limiting the opportunity of criminals to commit an act through the presence of more patrol vehicles to provide quicker response time to an emergency requiring off-duty personnel. To reduce maintenance costs on vehicles in the fleet by establishing the vehicle's usable life. To reduce the yearly mileage on each vehicle, thereby increasing the vehicle's usable life. To maintain vehicles in top operating condition through preventative maintenance and personal assignments. And to provide increased incentive and morale of all personnel. Now, I might, in addition to add, that average Crown Victoria patrol car costs twenty thousand dollars. If you spread that twenty thousand dollars out over a nine-year policy or frame of time, you will see that the actual investment per car is very minimal. It's very cost-effective to do this. I would also remind the board that the city of Starkville currently has twenty-two thousand five hundred population. The city of Columbus has twenty-five thousand population. I have forty-seven police officers. Columbus has seventy-seven. The only reason that I can hold the land on public safety in the city of Starkville is with this take-home fleet. We have been letting cars go into the county for particular officers as long as I've been employed here since nineteen seventy-five. This mostly used to be with command officers that lived in the county, or detectives or narcotics officers. We started the take-home fleet concept because it is utilized by every other law enforcement agency and has been found to be very cost-effective. Mr. Mills, you will recall when you were a deputy sheriff, you had a take-home patrol car.
I lived in the city of Starkville.
Yes, sir. But I believe you had a take-home car.
Yes, I did.
I thought so. I also recall that the, all the sheriff's departments, Highway Patrol, ATF, Bureau of Narcotics, every law enforcement agency that you can think of has take-home cars. It is a very practical matter. It assures accountability on a car. If a car is damaged, you know who to go to for the car. Maintenance is the responsibility for the officer. It gets much more increased mileage and better use out of the car. And our whole disaster plan is built around a take-home fleet. Obviously, from what we've just seen with Hurricane Katrina, the first two or three days of any crisis, you're basically on your own. What we're seeing right now as a national scandal in media is a lack of response from FEMA, NEMA, and outside agencies to come in and save citizens' lives. It falls back on the local person. A police officer without a police car is no more effective than a cavalry one without a horse. That's where all his equipment is. That's where all his emergency gear is. That's where all the things are that make him a productive element in providing public safety. So therefore, it is extremely important that if we're going to continue to provide for this community at forty-seven officers, what Columbus is doing with seventy-seven, that this fleet not be affected. I might also add this in regard to fuel consumption by the Starkville Police Department. We actually should be coming in at less fuel consumption due to the fact that we project for forty-seven cars for forty-seven officers to be running twelve months out of the year. Currently, I have three officers that are deployed to Iraq in military deployment. I just had another two that were activated to go to the Gulf Coast. So that's five cars that won't be rolling. And in addition to that, we hired two patrol officers tonight that'll start as rookies. And it'll be some several months before they're capable of getting in the cars and actually riding alone by themselves. So that's seven cars right there that we'll be saving fuel consumption on. So my fuel consumption actually should go down dramatically. And I think that most of what we're seeing right now is a spike in the fuel rate. And I think that this will come down over a period of time. And I believe we can suffer through. This is not something that is unique to the Starkville Police Department. It's affecting every city and every county and every community in every state across the United States. And the take-home fleet allows us to protect this community. And I'm a big supporter of it, as is all of the law enforcement agencies that I've named. It works. The reason that it works is because it's effective, and that's what makes us be able to do what we do.
Chief, I appreciate that. And I guess I've got a problem, because I'm an economist and I look for facts, so the question that I asked, that I'm not certain I got an answer to...
Okay.
Is I'm just trying to understand why we believe and have experienced a going from, we believe a regular fleet car gets three years.
Yes.
A take-home fleet gets nine years. And I didn't hear anything specific. What I was conjecturing is that if perhaps when you have a vehicle right outside the police department that get used for AM and PM, that's going to have, say, a hundred thousand miles during that year. If you have a car that's only used in the AM that then gets taken home to the county at night, then that perhaps has fifty thousand miles. And so what I'm trying to establish is, why do we think that you're getting more use out of the car by this policy? And it sounds like there's some very good reasons. I just didn't hear any of them in your speech.
I absolutely know we are.
Okay.
Number one, I have had a take-home car since nineteen seventy-nine myself. And I can tell you, and we can prove it statistically if we need to, through the shop, that a car assigned to one individual will last much longer than a car that is assigned to several individuals that have less than the incentive to take care of it, is subject to harder driving, and it never stops. It runs twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. That's what you get into with a fleet concept. A fleet concept, a car never quits rolling. With a sand unit, the car does not function but six months out of the year. Because the way our shifts work with twelve-hour shifts, basically, out of a two-week period, you work seven days and you're off seven days. So that car rests six months out of a year. Now, in addition, that car resting and not being run for twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five is in a fleet concept, which is where your cars tear up. Not only is it resting for six months, but you're getting actually less mileage out of it and more accountability on the individual car, because you know who's driving that car.
Would you say from a total mileage standpoint that a car that you're replacing every nine years today has the same number of miles on the car that if you want a fleet concept to be with three years? I guess I'm having a hard time figuring out how we're actually thinking that we're saving money if we're actually doing, if in fact it would be the same number of miles. And I'm not, I didn't come to pick a fight. I would have come much better prepared if I had. I'm just trying to determine how we actually think.
I would have come much better to defend myself if I'd known I was going to be attacked.
So the question is, and I don't, I mean, and do you understand my question?
I understand.
It sounds like it may be the exact same number of miles.
At the end of nine years is the end story. And I'm guessing that that's probably the case.
Okay.
Do you have this, do you have those numbers actually, Chief? That at the end of nine years, when the car dies?
Well, I know right now we've got cars in service that are ten years old. And we've got this thing set up on, we buy fifteen cars every three years, and we buy them on lease purchase. So if you bought five cars a year for a hundred thousand dollars, or, and replaced them every couple of years, because they're worn out from running all the time, or if you buy fifteen cars and you pay for them over three years, your actual amount of money that you're paying is the same. And because your cars will last nine years, assigned to one officer, then we've got it set up on a nine-year rotation of replacement. So you get forty-five cars in a nine-year period. Now, obviously, if you've got forty-seven officers, you're going to need to pick up a couple of extra cars. For instance, this year, we picked up a vehicle through FEMA, which is, not FEMA, through Homeland Defense, which is no expense to the city. We also have money in the DARE account to pick up another vehicle for that that would be of no cost out of general fund. So this system works, and it was well researched by all of my predecessors. And as I said, it works for every other law enforcement agency, Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Department, you name it, they all do it. It's just that most cities have not been fortunate enough to be long-ranging in their planning to work into a take-home fleet like we have. And we've been working on this for almost ten years, and we've only had it completed within the last two. And it's very successful, and it's working great for us right now.
It's not just a mileage factor either. It is the wear and tear and the taking care of it.
Well, and on top of that, let's go back to what we just saw when you were on this, okay? Our emergency scenario is with forty-seven officers, you're going to lose some cars and you're going to lose some officers if a tornado hits a city and takes out half of it, or an ice storm, whatever. We can see that a natural disaster could happen, or any one of a number of other situations. The emergency situation is, and FEMA will tell you this, for the first two or three days, you're on your own. You're going to have very limited resources, other than what you can put together yourself to save your citizens. If the worst scenario hits and we lose half this town in a tornado, our plan is to put people on twelve-hour shifts. And you would bring in four platoons of ten each. You would put two on nights and two on days. And you would run like that until you could break it down and go back to one ten-man platoon per twelve-hour shift. Now, this is putting everybody in uniform, detectives, narcotics, and it would still leave you a cushion for casualties out of that forty-seven, and you're going to have some where they won't be able to come, or logistical support, because somebody will still need to be there to order fuel and whatever else we need. But that's our basic concept. Right now, if a tornado hits this city, I can put the people on the street, in the cars, or any other natural disaster that I can just about take care of us. And we're there. We're there with the expenses and the money that we've invested over the last ten years to get us there. And we've done a real good job. Chief says started this, basically. But it all goes back to narcotics, command officers, detectives, other people on call have all had take-home cars. So it was just a very few cars or officers in the force that didn't have these cars anyway. And if you look at your state troopers or your deputies, we're doing the same thing that they do. And it's working for them and it's working for us. So I know that the city's in a crunch right now for money, but I'm absolutely asking y'all, do not try and do something that would be penny-wise and dollar-fooish, because this is what's saving this community in public safety. I can tell you with the Starkville Police Department, the city of Starkville.
Chief, let me ask you one other question.
Yes.
If we, if we actually had an emergency where you would call an officer back on duty, we said we're going to call one in Morgantown.
Okay.
Is he going to get in that automobile, and is he going to turn his blue lights on, is he going to run his sirens at eighty and eighty-five from Morgantown to Starkville?
It would depend on the emergency, Mr. Mills.
And I'm not trying to pick on you, Chief. I've been knowing you, and I've been calling you David for years, and I'm not trying to pick on you.
Yes, sir.
But we've got a situation that we're getting a lot of complaints about, and we need to...
What are the complaints, Mr. Mills?
Well, you see, is letters circulating everywhere?
I have reason to believe that this letter is an anonymous letter.
Well, it could be.
It is an anonymous letter.
I have a letter that I think that I discussed with you that you accused me of writing.
No, sir, I never accused you of writing that letter.
Well, that's not what the sheriff said.
I never accused you of that. If the sheriff told you that, he's a friend of mine, I'd be glad to discuss it with you. But I will say this.
Gentlemen, calm yourselves.
Yes, sir, I'm very calm. I have never, in my career, nor will I ever, respond to anonymous complaints, and here's why. If somebody wrote me a letter and said Jim Mills is a child molester, I would not go to your next-door neighbors and ask them if that was true. That is an unfair thing to do. If somebody has a legitimate complaint to make against my officers, we have a very specific, structured investigative method to take that complaint, report it, who it came from, and ask that individual to come, put it in writing, and go on the record, and we'll investigate it. This is a very thorough and adequate policy that covers everything that my police officers do with a take-home vehicle. If anyone has any knowledge that any of my officers are in violation of this, all they have to do is make this complaint and report it, and we will investigate it. And if it is true and I find that they are in violation, there are parts of this very policy that I can take this car away from them. This is a discretionary assignment policy. It is not mandatory. But if you do agree to take a car home, you have to be able to be willing to respond when called on. If we call an officer and they're not available for call, we'll take this car back away from them. Gentlemen, I know about this anonymous letter. It was sent to the last board and mayor, it was ignored, it's been sent out to you all. And I understand that y'all are new government officials trying to do a good job for the public. But I can assure you that I have never, nor will I ever, respond to anonymous complaints. If somebody has a legitimate complaint, there should be enough of a lady or a gentleman to step forward, put their name on the record, and we'll investigate it. But I'm not going to subject myself or my officers in my department to someone that has no more...
Backbone.
Thank you. Than to come forward with their complaint. And I have very strong reason to believe that this letter was foster-generated and written by somebody that has an ax to grind with the police department.
They had a lot of knowledge of what was going on.
Yes, sir, they sure do. And I can just about tell you, I know who wrote it. And I can just about tell you who all...
Can we run this? This doesn't have anything to do with fuel consumption.
It does.
Well, that gets to be a matter of opinion in regard to the overall gesture of this, and I don't feel like that we're getting anywhere with the discussion, discussion and adoption of a fuel conservation for the city of Starkville.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
But since we've opened this up, I do have a question, so that I will be intelligent about this. If I'm asked, I will have an intelligent answer.
Yes, ma'am.
My first question is, how many take-home cars do you have? How many officers take?
We have forty-seven police officers, and we have forty-seven take-home cars. We have forty-nine total cars in fleet. We have one extra patrol car, mark car, and we have one extra plane car.
Okay. Did I understand you to say that each officer that take home a vehicle, so that's all of them, is what you're saying? That they are responsible for the maintenance of that vehicle?
No, ma'am, they're responsible for making sure that vehicle gets proper maintenance. maintenance through the city bar.
Proper maintenance, okay. Well, see, the sheriff said I will be intelligent about this now.
Right. That way, you don't have to have that car lacking on, when it's supposed to have the tires rotated, the oil changed, or something like that. In other words, they have to take the car in. They don't bring it in and leave it. Somebody else has to haul it to the barn and things like that. The vehicle maintenance for that car is their assigned responsibility to get it in, and that's what helps make the car last longer.
Thank you, Mr. Ledley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So, back to fuel conservation.
By the way, I have a 1991 Crown Victoria that you can add to your police fleet out there if you'd like to.
Mayor, you might need to pay that, sell that, pay that.
Yeah.
How long will you hear about that car?
I'm gonna tell you, every day I see it. So, do we not decide to do anything with fuel, fuel consumption? We just gotta report, basically, in regard to that?
Well, what I, what I was asking, I've gotten, let me make sure I've gotten the proper feedback and that the board is in a consensus. We wanna keep them rolling at five days a week?
Yep. That you got that, and you got where they don't want any charge change and two-day-a-week trash pickup?
Trash pickup, and the board is, the board is good with that. The other, the other thing I would ask them to do with those two-year items is, the fuel conservation policy was very generic or very general. I didn't speak to the specifics. The other was the strict timeframe that we were dealing with, like the next week, a month, or two months, or three months.
Perhaps when we run out of fuel, you can bring all this back.
Well, I'd hope we do it before then. But this was just a, just a general, you know, this board won't adopt a fuel conservation policy as such. That's not to address the two-day, two-week, two-day-a-week pickup or the three cuttings versus the five cuttings. This is the, we will change our air filters. We will combine errands where we can. We will, general versus specific. And if the board don't wanna do that, that's fine. I just wanted to put it in front of you and say we had.
Well, we'll have another meeting in approximately five, no, five days with the budget meeting.
Right.
And so, these were, we could get maybe an update. Do you have a hurricane impact update?
I did, and at this point in time, I'm not sure anybody wants to hear it. I'm not sure I even want to.
Make it three minutes.
Ah, well, okay. I was gonna provide these.
And may I make a statement to the rest of you to come up here and speak with quickness so we can get this meeting over with, okay?
These are the folks who are part of the response team, and just for your information. Thank you. The mayor and I attended a meeting this afternoon, which we'll have another meeting after Bert Keen is the next one. And I was gonna just provide you with information regarding who was, who was there and what they were doing and what the needs were. And I'll just leave the needs in case someone might have some. Some of the needs that were discussed were in building in order to process the people for FEMA aid and that sort of thing. They need pillows, blankets, bottled water, gift, gift cards. And I presented it to them like a Walmart gift card or a Lowe's gift card or something like those. Soft drinks, juice, baby items, clean supplies, and computer banks with people to land them. And that's, again, included for FEMA assistance. The Red Cross is now a service center feeding folks, and they feed them at seven-thirty, twelve o'clock, and five-thirty. And they need volunteers. There's no one actually staying there. Most folks who are staying are staying at the First Baptist Church. They're providing housing matchups, employing matchups. If anybody has any employment that they know of, or any housing that they know of, and there's also volunteers signing up, and that's at the First United, United and that is church. And I'll let it go with that. But that's just in case anybody, audience or board members have some folks that need some help.
Mr. Robel.
Here, sir.
We need you in regard to the final draft of P and Z.
Mr. Mills.
I believe that was taken off the consent agenda.
May I quickly say while Mr. Robel's coming up, there was a concern I made earlier. The initial draft that was in the board packet was not the latest revision. It did not have the last language that was included in section five, so I would take it that that is, that's the, this misrule that that's now before.
And you got, and in there, we just pull it off the computer and pull it through the line.
And just, and just to say real quickly for the board to know why they're looking for that last draft and this specific language, that if any member that was appointed to represent a ward, and that member moves away from that particular ward, then he or she automatically vacates his membership of the commission. And that's been the interpretation of the board, just specific language to make it.
And I think that's been corrected.
Yes, sir. And I just want you to make that motion. That's all been correct.
Mr. Mayor, board, looking at over, this is a very generous-sized planning commission. I don't particularly have any problem with it because I have a very enthusiastic group, and we have about seven or eight ma, major items, which I think that this commission can address and bring to your attention. My only concern is that sometimes getting a quorum of eight members might be a difficulty. But as far as the structure and, and the operation and so forth, I have no problem with that.
Thank you. Any other question, Mr. Robel? No, thank you, sir. That brings us down to Public Works Department.
We're gonna stop.
Excuse me. Yes, we need to approve that corrected. Would you make the motion, please?
Mr. Ma-
Yes, someone?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of this adoption of this final ordinance that we just, for the planning is on commission.
That's the one with the correction of if you move out of the area.
Yes, sir.
I thought Mr. McLaren made that motion previously in the other court. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion to approve P and Z. Information tonight, all those in favor, please raise your hand. If you have a question.
Well, I got some comments to make.
Okay, go ahead.
Just slow down.
All right.
I know everybody wants to go home. Just slow down a little bit, please.
Go ahead, make your comments.
I will. A couple of things. Section two talks about composition of this board, and it discusses what we have done previously, going to the twelve members with the board, reverting back to nine members when appointments go back. But then, in terms of office, we go in and we're talking about the original formation, and we've got appointed to two years, four years, six years, then being eligible to reapply for reappointment and everything else. If we're going to, you know, it, it seems to me that at this juncture, those two sections are in conflict with each other. Another comment I have about this is that, once again, we are talking about language in here for Board of Appeals and Adjustments, which, or Adjustments and Appeals, excuse me, which we have discussed previously about doing away with altogether. And I think that it may be.
We had talked about that, and just determined that since this is something y'all had acted on, we're gonna bring it to you with an amendment or with a potential change later on.
Okay, so amend it. Amend it now, and then come back and amend it at some future point?
After Mr. Robel had a chance to look at it and go through it. Just because y'all had already actually acted on it.
Right, sure.
And put it in file, so that it would, it would represent what you requested be done a few weeks ago.
Right.
Again, again, Mr. Robel's had an opportunity to look at more of the, the, if that's acceptable.
Well, I think we have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please. We got four. All those opposed? Two?
Three.
Four to three. It passes. That brings us down to Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, there was the city clerk's position.
I've got that on here. I haven't forgotten. I just put them in a different order here, okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, we have, we're down to Public Works. Doug, that you, if you're awake back there.
I like this rule approach. I'm gonna stand here.
All right. Make it quick.
But y'all have this policy in the packet, so in the interest of saving time, I'll get up to some questions that you might have.
Couple of questions. Under the adjustments for leaks, which is section 2.300, specifically section 2.331, it says for indoor leaks, the amount of consumption for two consecutive high bills in excess of the six-month, whatever that statement says. What was y'all's thought of, why wouldn't you just simply use a six-month average? Why were you wanting to use the two consecutive high bills in excess?
Why would we wanna use two consecutive high bills?
Right.
Because sometimes people don't know they have a leak until they get the bill.
Uh-huh.
And then by the time they fix it, then maybe two or three weeks into the next billing cycle.
Okay. So, it was the attempt not just to have it be one month, but to be two months? Okay.
There's some people, you know, just don't realize they have a leak until they get the bill. And then they're already into the next billing cycle, and it gives them an opportunity to do this.
And then, just as a question, under the 3.000 enactment, it says board approved high consumption bills, held in suspension of the state of enactment. Awaiting the development and adoption of this policy shall be settled in accordance to this policy. So, my specific question would be, how does this impact the Whiteheads who came, Reverend Whitehead who came? Do you know how this would specifically address his high water bill?
Well, for every, and we surveyed, surveyed men, and I think I showed you all the results. They're responsible for the bill, because they said they didn't have a leak, both water and syrup.
Any other questions for Mr. Devlin in regard to the approval of a water bill adjustment policy? Did you want to table that for further discussion, or what's your, what's your perk, what's your pleasure, board?
I'd prefer that I take it on advisement.
Okay. Do you have, you making any form of motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to take the adjustment of the water bill policy on advisement. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Approval of the pest management procedure?
Can it, if it's a saving time, I'll open.
Go ahead.
Mr. Devlin.
Yes.
Well, first, I just want to end up on this water policy thing. I really appreciate the work that y'all put into it. It, it's obviously very thoughtful, and there may or may not need to be a few tweaks. It's obviously a professional policy that reflects the spirit of all the things that I'd asked for. And the same thing under the, the new policy for pest management, but I do have a couple of questions. Under the mosquito 2.120, it says adult desiding, which is the spraying, shall commence on May 15th. And when we met with the pesticide rep, they recommended July for a start date of adult desiding for several good reasons. The first one is that we start having a resistance in the mosquito population if we over-pesticide. And two, that from a disease standpoint, that we're really not looking at West Nile that early in the season. It comes later in the season. And I imagine you must have had a good, a good reason to start spraying this early, but I, I didn't know what it was.
Well, the, after talking to them again, you just advised this as a good generic policy to have. Just give yourself a couple of weeks in case you have nice, that are warm weather, sooner than expected. Just for lack of any other extenuating circumstance, have a good schedule.
Okay. It seemed like there were, you had in here that there were some, with extenuating circumstances, you could use different guidelines. And I guess I would prefer that we use a more conservative approach, given the resistance that is rapidly accruing in the mosquito population from a silver spraying, that we would start with a later date. And then, if there were extenuating circumstances like, like rain and warmer weather, or West Nile outbreak, early CDC recommendations, et cetera, that we could start it earlier. But I'd be uncomfortable us doing that upfront.
Of course, keep in mind, this is not an ordinance. It's a policy and can be changed at any board need.
Um.
Don't change that. You first. You first.
What I heard from him, and I understand you may have had a subsequent conversation, was July as a generic starting point for the adult desiding program. And so, if, if there aren't any other, since you've had subsequent conversations that I wasn't a part of, I'm, I'm gonna lean towards what he originally had advised us. And that seems to fit with what CDC guidelines are as well. There, there are step-up responses to if you find West Nile and, and birds, et cetera, that you should start your programs earlier. But it's all based on, on empirical data as opposed to, you know, just spraying this from a nuisance standpoint. Under the public education component 2.6, it talks about during the month of July that we would start the public education component and reducing the site. And everything, again, from the CDC says that that really should be done in the spring, because what you're trying to do is reduce the source of, of these breeding sites early before they, before they happen. So, just in general, I'd like us to look at starting that public education process much earlier than, than the actual, in other words, if we wait until July, which is when West Nile typically occurs, we would, in essence, be too late. And again, what the CDC says is, the source reduction is the most efficient way to reduce mosquitoes in personal protection, which is another component to public education, is the most effective way for individuals to prevent West Nile. Under the no-spray request, which is under 2.5, I appreciate that this codifies the current situation where we have opting out for medical reasons, and wanted just to understand what operational difficulties there might be if individuals want to opt out who may or may not have a American Medical Association-approved reason for doing so. Some people are gaining, increasingly concerned about the, the use of pesticides, et cetera. And, for example, would there be any operational difficulties, as other communities do, to just say that from their property line, if I'm driving down Main Street and I don't want you to spray at my property, would there be significant operational difficulties in, in doing so?
Yeah, of course. I mean, people are requesting. Of course, we can do anything. But I think a lot of times when you get into this, you have to look at what the other people around you are.
Right.
It doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
And under that no-spray request, I think we probably want to put something in there that's specific, and, and this was certainly the case of our motion, that in cases of public emergency, which would include a West Nile outbreak, that the hour rights to spray would outweigh the individual's request from a, from a no-spray standpoint. And I think that you should just be part of that, just so it was overly comprehensive.
So, you want to take this thing back and rewrite it?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, we'll not do anything to it about it.
Could, could I request that Mr. Devlin contact me, because I have some additional changes that I think legally need to be put in here that will put us in violation of privacy laws.
Y'all get together and get it taken care of.
But I don't think it's a major redo. It's outstanding first step.
Well, let's let him go ahead and get it redone and meet your specifications, okay?
Sounds good, Mr. Mayor. What's next?
Let's go down to Ms. Boyd with the bags, I believe.
I'm hoping the bids are open up today. Dear Qua, Jared's poor guy, those bids. So, this is the reason why, not only the reason why, we'll be saving forty-one thousand dollars if we go with this for the 1.5 mil. That's a difference. You're looking at six-point, a two-point mil and a 1.5 mil. And that's the difference. Okay? That's just a bid sheet that I'm giving to you all. One big, I have them right here, ma'am.
So, you're suggesting we go to the 1.5 mil at four dollars and 29 cents per row? Row, is that right?
Exactly. And the reason being, because we can save, we'll be saving forty-one thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay. And somebody asked for this to be taken off the consent agenda, and do they have the questions?
My, my request to take it off the consent agenda was at the time of the consent agenda, we didn't have the bid information.
Right.
And I was uncomfortable approving a bid that I hadn't seen yet.
All right. So, would you make the motion, then we accept?
How does this compare to the three-mil bag bid?
Oh, no, we don't have a three-mil bag. We have two-point, two-point mil. And they're both on here. I set a bid out for each one of a 1.5, and on there, there's a 2.0 mil.
It's the three-mil.
It's the 3 mil sleeve is what the 2-mil bag roll has, okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Just a point of clarification is, is, was this going to come out of the 2005 budget or was it going to come out of the 2006 budget? And do we need to make any adjustments if we do it earlier?
Looking at my budget as of 8, 2005, I have enough in my budget, remaining budget now together.
So would, would we then do some type of, would we then not need to order the same number for 2006 if we pull this up?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Um, and.
So I have 129,535.10 in my remaining budget as of 8, 2005. It's going to cost 1, uh, 127,920. So it's, uh, it's in there.
And again, the, the reason we were going from the 2.0 mil to the 1.5 is because the, basically, we were able to save the, the additional money. Many of us on the board have received these bags in advance and have, have been trialing them out.
Yes.
I would not say they are as good as the 2.0, but they, they have, they have met our family needs.
A handful of newspapers, and I think that's adequate.
We have been giving them out to the departments, um, since we started out delivering. We gave out, ordered 366, uh, rolls of bags, and we're just about out of them.
And nothing that we're doing tonight is going to change the current distribution method that we, that we have?
No, and not at this time.
Okay.
We will be delivering out on the weekend, most of the people at home.
And I'd like to make the motion that we approve, uh, the bid, uh, from Jadcor Plastics at 4.92, a roll for the 1.5 mil garbage bags. And what was the number that she said we were ordering?
Uh, we will be ordering, just one moment. Uh, we're going to be ordering basically 13,000 for October and 13,000 for April, which is, uh, let's see, it's 20, 26,000 five bags. I have it here. And that's 1,352,000 bags, 52 on a roll.
Were we proposing to order all 26,000 now or just the 13,000?
I would, we, I would prefer to go ahead and order them all now since I have all the money. We normally order, order them all at that time.
Okay.
But they will stagger delivery, will they not?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to accept the low bid on the bags?
I think Matt already made that.
Second. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This brings us down to the city clerk and, uh, the hiring. Oh, excuse me, Summer.
You, that's fine, just.
That's advantage, disadvantage being way down there on the far end.
Or just call for the no votes and you can see.
Okay, all right. We got one no vote. That's the reason we asked for hands go up so we can see.
You still got to call for the.
Yeah, I, I realize that. Uh, sometime. City clerk. Let's wake everybody up. Uh, this, uh, was taken off the consent agenda for the hiring of, uh, Ms. Taylor, I guess. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Perkins raised that issue. All right, Mr. Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this matter be deferred, uh, for consideration at our recess meeting on Monday, September 4, 2005.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion with a second that this matter be deferred until the recess meeting. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed, raise your hands. Thank you. This brings it down to the engineering department. First thing on his agenda is approval of takeover agreement for well number eight.
You will recall that, uh, the contractor that was awarded the contract for well number eight has defaulted on his loan or on his contract. We have turned it over to the bonding company. This takeover agreement is between the city and the bonding company to ensure that that work is sufficiently done. And, uh, Mr. Faber and the consultant engineers have looked it over. There are some things in, in the bowl type that we changed or added to this, uh, the bulk of which is on the third page under item nine, which is a list of claims that we are aware of, but the actual amounts can't be determined until we agree to agree on the contract. And those items would be, um, due for hemp hill construction company who has the other two contracts that's ongoing at the same time, well number eight, I mean, uh, filter number seven and, uh, booster station number two. They will have some additional, uh, costs and having to come back to, to that after completion of the well. Legal fees, uh, due to the past and the current city attorneys, engineering fees, as well as interest accumulated on the state revolving loans. We have to agree on this so we can, uh, basically stop the clock on those items and tell the bonding company what the, the numbers are. They in turn are, um, suggesting that there will be some additional funds due to them from us because of delays in getting the contract done and the price has gone up on their, their subcontractor. But we do have to agree to agree on this before we can get those numbers and finalize this agreement. Mr. Faber has, I think, some concerns about that that he might want to share with you.
Well, I've just been notified by the attorney for the insurance company putting on us, us on notice that if any delays that are attributable to the city, that, that we would be held responsible for these delays. Now, it's not, it's not clear what delays he's referring to or what kind of money we're talking about, but, uh, I just got this letter, uh, last week.
But you still recommend approval of.
I'd, I'd recommend it, but I reviewed the contract and made the changes that I felt were necessary.
Mr. Mayor, I would, uh, move approval of the agreement between the city and the bonding company relative to the so-called takeover agreement for well number eight, uh, and correspondingly, a stop work ought to be issued on filter number seven, booster station number two until such time as well number eight is completed, tested, accepted, et cetera.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. All those opposed, raise your hands. It passes.
Thank you. The second item is, is basically the discussion of the retaining wall on South Jackson Street between Hogan and Overstreet School. It is, is, uh, in the process of failing. It has shifted out toward the street about eight inches. We, uh, we feel like that it should, for the best interest of the safety of, of everyone, we should tear that wall out and replace it. Um, I talked with the mayor about the possibilities of how to do this and what one, one scenario came up was that we have an ongoing contract to do the downtown sidewalks. We have, uh, done basically all but the west end of the, of the city. We have the south side of that west end between Wash, just west of Washington. The south side is in much worse shape than the north side. And what I would recommend that we consider is to go ahead and do the south side and change order out the north side and, and have that money put toward the retaining wall. And then at a later date, the city, we could come back and redo the south side with, possibly with our own forces or at a later date with other contract. The, uh, price for the retaining wall by itself was $37,223. With the change order that I'm talking about, where we delete the north side of that short block there from, uh, Washington or Douglas Connor to the west end of the city on Main Street, uh, we can get the sidewalk deleted, the retaining wall added for a fiscal $13,360 and have it done within two to three weeks.
Well, I like for me with the retaining wall that he's referring to, it's about to collapse. It's near one of our schools.
Just on, across from Northland Cable on the east side of North Jackson, South Jackson.
Uh, we can't do this through force account completely, our own force?
The retaining wall?
Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend it because it is a safety issue as far as the, the angle of the pros of the soil and, and, uh, we'd need, uh, special forms that we don't have in order to get in there and do those retaining walls and form it up on both sides. We could do the, uh, sidewalk on the north side of Main Street, force account.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I certainly appreciate the, um, the recommendation come from the city engineer, but it would look very uniformal if we allowed the sidewalk on the north side to be done by the same contractor. That area's going to be heavily traveled, in my opinion, because we're going to be having the new circuit court annex, um, at your location. So you have citizens and other persons walking back from the courthouse area down to the circuit court annex referred to as the, the county justice center. I would prefer, uh, keeping that looking in a very similar manner as the other sidewalks have been done downtown. So I would like to ask our budget chairperson, um, do we have the, the funds that we can expand, uh, to do the sidewalk, the 37,000 without disturbing the funds for, uh, the downtown sidewalk? And of course, the prior board did stress urgency to this retaining wall. Nothing had, had been, has been done to it, but I would prefer, uh, uh, having the north side of, of Main Street done just like the south side and then identifying funds if they are available. And I would like to ask the chairman, uh, just real quickly, Mr. Conix, do you think that those funds are available if the board decides to utilize this as a priority?
As I understand, the downtown sidewalk, um, had been funded and, and fully budgeted. Um, so the, the funds are there to complete the sidewalk project. Um, and, and then for the retaining wall itself, um, the, the issue is, is that it isn't specifically budgeted for, are there, are there opportunities for us to find unused funds in the 2005 budget? Yes. Would we be, in essence, pulling out money that we planned to roll into 2006? That's, that's the issue. Um, but if it's, if it's an assessment of this is posing an imminent danger, I don't see how we can avoid not fixing the, uh, the retaining wall. And I'll have to rely on your, your expertise on that. Would I like to have the money? Yes.
Well, we looked at the north side sidewalk and it's really not in that bad a shape. As a matter of fact, when I first became the mayor, some questioned whether the money was even approved to do, uh, that particular part of the sidewalks. Question was there that, uh, that it, maybe that wasn't, money was there. So we found out that money was approved for that and that, uh, knowing that this retaining wall is a, an urgent situation that we were wondering if it would get the same company to do the retaining wall, but forego the north side sidewalk and apply those monies, uh, towards the retaining wall so that we could get into the retaining wall and get it completed for, uh, what was that figure? $13,000 roughly difference?
Uh, yes, sir. $13,360.
And if you look at the, the north side sidewalk, it's in pretty good shape. As a matter of fact, I thought the south end looked pretty good until the bill tried to convince me and convince me that's, that's really very thinly cast if you see what's coming up up there.
Very thin. And, and I agree. I, I would like to see the whole downtown done uniformly. And, uh, and this, this could wait till the next meeting if you want to look at the numbers.
I think all of y'all go see the South Jackson Street wall as it's coming off now. If you, if you haven't seen it, you need to go see it. All right. Did I not hear someone earlier today saying, can we get kids walk school? If you walk by that wall, that wall collapse on them, then that'd be a, a poor judgment. I mean, that wall needs attention now because it's tilting at, uh, what?
The top of it's displaced about 10 to 12 inches out.
Is it becoming increasingly displaced?
Yes, it's slowly getting bigger.
No, it's getting worse and worse. And if we get additional rains.
We, we need, of course, to fix it, but we also need to complete the sidewalk project just like we had planned. So let's just do it.
Well, if you'd leave my sweeping council law, we might be able to come up with the money.
Well, if we never get them set up according to law, we will at that point.
What would be the board's pleasure?
My pleasure is to, uh, complete the sidewalks as planned and have an additional preparation for the, um, the wall on South Jackson. That's my, um, pleasure.
Is that a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion, a second, that we complete the sidewalk project and do the se- the retaining wall separately. We have that in form of a motion. We have any discussion, further of that?
Can we add that as a change order to this concrete sidewalk?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, would that be part of the motion?
That'd be part of the motion to add that as a change order to the contract.
All those in favor of the motion, please, uh, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We're down to discuss determination contract for the frontage roads.
Yes, sir. I was asked by the mayor early, early on that to, to see what we could do as far as terminating the contract for the frontage road that was going to be in front of the, the site at that time for the municipal complex out on Highway 25 bypass. I contracted, contacted the contractors, APAC of Mississippi. They, uh, were very cooperative, I might say. And, uh, the work done to date is what they were asking for to be reimbursed, which is very logical reimbursement. Their work total is $39,521, which included, uh, some excavation work, clearing and grubbing, and, uh, some base prep. The, uh, and some, and $8,500 worth of pipe. So technically, for us to cancel that contract would cost us out of pocket $39,521, but we would gain, uh, $8,500 worth of pipe that we could use starting next week. I mean, this, this is the pipe that we buy on a regular basis, so it would not be wasted.
Need to, I give an explanation why I asked them to stop?
No.
Yeah.
No.
So we, I mean, there's no reason to go, to take a road to nowhere. We're not building a municipal complex out there.
Was there any, uh, I'm trying to get back in my mind, any type of agreement with the, uh, the group that bought property out there relative to the frontage road? Did they contribute?
There, there is, and they contributed about, I think, $24,000, which we have received. Uh, and it just so happens that their property fronts right where the entrance is off of the highway to their property. So even if it cost us a small amount of money to say complete that particular payment issue right there for, to their properties, uh, we'll still extremely well ahead. Is that all right, Bill?
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, I move that we terminate the frontage road contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We terminate the contract. Any further discussion?
There is no legal problem with the other property owner?
I don't know.
We haven't asked.
This is before me.
I can't see that they would, uh, want us to build this entire road. I don't have a problem with us using them either get reenfund, refund their monies, 24,000, since we have not, uh, paid this, or, uh, go ahead and say, do this part to their place, which is right there.
Which may cost more than $24,000.
Could well do that.
Which they may or may not even want, though.
That's correct.
But I think this should.
Have we had any conversation with them?
Uh, we're in process of having conversation on that over and up, Mr. Paul, that, uh, we had a part where we don't know if they were even deeded what they were supposed to be. This is, uh, an issue which we're, uh, in talking. See if you could enter this conversation?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes.
The airport board, I'm sorry.
What you're telling me is that the proposal, what you're saying is to use city employees and city material and equipment to construct?
No, 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 no. Is that the people that are in question, they contributed, uh, $24,000 for this road to be paid, okay? It just so happens that, uh, uh, the highways here and the exit right, right here is like this, and this road was going to come all the way down this way right here. And their acreage that they bought is right here. Uh, with the majority expenses all the way down through here, this is not that big of a. a deal, am I not right, Bill?
That's correct.
Even if we had to, uh, pave it, we'll do twenty-four thousand dollars worth of paving, or we'll give their money back to them, let them do whatever they want to.
We were building a thousand feet of rubber.
There were, this, the part that we saved on was this entire length, and it went nowhere.
Well, I, I wasn't privy to this agreement, I don't know what went on when they bought this property, did they buy this property with our?
Board wasn't even privy to it, it was kind of an arrangement made that if the board approved it after the agreement was done.
I, I don't feel I have enough information to adequately advise the board, and there's some legal issues involved. If you're talking about taking their money.
We're gonna give it back to them.
Now, the, I know, but you were talking about taking their money, twenty-four thousand dollars, some odd dollars.
For some reason or other, there was an agreement before the board even approved it. But, yes?
I'll modify that motion, that we, motion to terminate the contract subject to legal review and, and approval by our city attorney.
Will that work? Do we have a second to that motion?
I have a second.
We got a motion with a second. I think all of you have heard the discussion about it. Uh, all in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. We have two opposed, we have four, five for it.
The next item is also a question on, on South 25, on the bypass. The Ashford family, uh, which, Mr. Runners was here, have, uh, are in the process of developing a hotel slash, uh, hotel slash convention center south of, uh, the industrial park, uh, property. Matter of fact, about a quarter mile south of there. And they have not got access from their property to Highway 25 via one of these crossovers. And what has happened is that normally in the city areas or the urban areas, the highway department, when building a four-lane highway, put the crossovers, which is the access to the property on both sides, at eight-hundred-and-eighty linear feet apart. Anything outside the city limits is eight, is, uh, seventeen-hundred-and-sixty linear feet apart, is, or the rural spacing, as they call it. When this project was started, Mr. Ashford's property, it was in the county, and it was not part of the city limits. They based their spacing and their, their, uh, negotiation with the property owners for the, the property and the right of way on the, in his case, on the rural limits, which was at that time outside the city limits. Since then, we've annexed them, they are now inside the city limits, but still have crossovers at eighteen-hundred-and-seventy feet apart, which do not correspond to his property. And what he is requesting, and we have to request it from MDOT, is to allow, uh, for us to request the urban spacing for the crossovers, which would allow him to have, and anyone else in his situation, to, uh, have a crossover at eight-hundred-and-eighty feet apart, which in that case, what it boils down to is we'd have more crossovers in the city limits than we have now, because of the increased, uh, number of them due to spacing. We have to request that of MDOT, and I think in this case, they were granted, since they know that we got caught, and he got caught in the middle of an annexation. Uh, as to the, who's responsible for building the cross, the access and the crossover, uh, I'm, the opinion is gonna be the property owner. So we're not asking you to spend any money, we're asking your permission for the city to, uh, request of MDOT that the urban spacing be approved.
And are they not agreeable to this?
They are.
I mean, their, uh, their conversation is that they're agreeable with this, it's just a matter of fact of getting something from this board.
Mr. Webb, you're, you're recommending that we do this, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that, uh, we, um, uh, request, uh, Mississippi Department of Transportation to grant the urban crossover spacing on New Highway 25 regarding this property portion.
Second.
That's the motion.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor, please raise your hands. It goes by unanimously, thank you for being patient with us.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Uh, this brings us down to executive session for discussing potential litigation regarding property acquisition, discussing potential delegate litigation regarding assessed taxes and employee grievance.
Mr. Mayor, I move we, uh, go into closed session and determine the need for executive sessions.
Uh, we have a motion, George, don't leave, I've got something for you to do tomorrow. Uh, we'll take a five-minute break. George.